Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council Workshop for June 13th, 2022. Kristen Rush, are you in a position to be able to do the roll call?
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones? Councilmember Fifer?
Here.
Councilmember Jones? I'm sorry. Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mr. Fifer?
I move to excuse Mayor Protem Jones from tonight's workshop.
Ms. Smith, if you'll vote. All votes cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones is excused from tonight's meeting, having previously given us indication he was not going to be able to get back in time. So first presentation tonight is on the Colorado Family Overview and Recommendation. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we will have Director of Human Resources Gabriella Bomber make this presentation.
Thank you. I just didn't want to trip and fall down the stairs, so it took my time.
You want to make a good impression in your first time appearing in your official capacity. Congratulations on that, by the way.
Thank you. So the presentation is available to you and also write up on this discussion. And good evening, Mayor Williams and members of council. It's nice to see you this evening, and thank you for your time. I want to spend a few moments with you discussing the Colorado Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program. And after much research by our team, we have a recommendation for you that requires council action. So I want to give you those details and ask for your guidance to move forward. So next slide, please. All right. First, I'll start by giving you a little bit of information, very high-level summary of what the Colorado Family Medical and Insurance Program is, nicknamed "family." That's what I'll refer to it as for this point forward. "Family" was passed by voters in the 2020 elections. It is a state-run insurance program that is meant to provide paid leave benefits to all Colorado workers and job protection should they need to take leave for specific reasons listed here, to take care of themselves or a family member if they have a serious illness or injury, pregnancy or childbirth, adoption, foster care placement, military exigency, or leave related to domestic violence, safety. The program is intended to provide paid leave for up to 12 to 16 weeks, depending on the circumstance. It is a partially-paid income replacement program. The state estimates that workers could get somewhere between 37% to 90% of their income covered during this leave with a weekly cap of $1,100. Next slide, please. Thank you. Now, what's interesting about, oh, eligibility. Yes, sorry. I moved on to a different slide. Eligibility is based on income earned. So workers who earn at least $2,500 in Colorado wages are eligible for the program, and that could be with any employer. So it's portable. You just keep earning until you reach that limit, and then you become eligible. And job protection leave is available after 180 days with an employer. "Family" is an insurance program. It's funded through premiums. The premiums are set at 0.9% of gross wages, and it is shared by the employer and the employee. They each pay half. So the employer would pay 0.45% of gross wages, and the employees pay 0.45% of their wages through payroll deductions to the state. In order to fund the program, premiums will start being collected in January of 2023, and benefits will start being paid out in January of 2024. Any questions so far? Okay. Next slide, please.
I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. There's a unique option here for municipalities. We can opt-in or opt-out of this program. I credit excellent lobbying by the Colorado Municipal League for this option. Recognizing that municipalities already offer very supportive leave programs to their employees, this option was provided to us, and we have a choice to make. The default is to opt-in, and the opting-out requires a vote of the city council and notification to the state by the end of this year. So you might be surmising that we're recommending to opt-out of the program. Here on the right side of the graph, you'll see Colorado municipalities. This is a survey that the Colorado Municipal League is running currently. There's about 60 cities or towns that have responded, and the majority are considering opting out or have already made moves to opt-out of the program. Only one municipality is choosing to opt-in, and some are undecided still. But we are recommending to opt-out of the program, and I'll explain why. Next slide, please.
Gabriella, ever.
Quick question for you while you're on that topic before we move on. Do you have any idea why essentially all the municipalities are opting out? If this is such a great program, why is everybody running for the door?
I'm going to talk about that in just a moment with the reasons we're suggesting to opt-out, but it's probably due to the fact, the main reason is, we already provide leave programs that offer these benefits, which is why we were given the option to begin with. And there's a lot of unknowns about this act still that we're waiting to learn about, and we can't make decisions on program administration until those rules and guidelines come out. So a lot of us are hesitant to just opt-in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So next slide, reasons why we're recommending to opt-out. As I just mentioned, the program is new. All of the rules and guidelines aren't available to us yet, so we're left wondering how this program will coordinate with other state, federal mandates, and also our own leave programs here at the city. For example, Family and Medical Leave Act, the Federal FMLA Act, this plan is intended to run concurrently with that, but there are different eligibility periods, and it's very unknown how the two will connect together and coordinate. Additionally, we have other state programs like the Healthy Families and Workplaces Act, and we still don't know how the two programs will work together. So we're left with some uncertainty about how to administer these programs all at once. Application and approval of leave is completely outside of the city's administrative process. We really don't have any say in employees applying or getting approved for leave. So again, we're kind of left out of the process. We can't work with our employees to manage their leave if they apply and receive this leave. Also, we do know that the family program prohibits us as an employer from requiring the use of our own paid sick leave programs. So when we have robust programs, we can't make the employee use them, which means if they don't choose to use our own programs, that leave is just sitting there. But also, they may end up in an unpaid leave status with us. So that puts a lot of unknowns into the mix as well, because we, you know, basically they're kind of breaking ties with us for a while. We can't manage the leave and help support them with our own existing leaves. But also, if they go into an unpaid status, we could end up with conflicting issues with our health insurance and our stop-loss programs because they require employees to be in an active paid status. So we'd have to look into those contracts as well. But probably the most important reason is we believe the city can do better. We have our own robust leave programs already, and we do have some gaps that we would have to address. But we believe we can expand and enhance our programs to offer equal or better benefits to our employees with less administrative burden and lesser cost. And employees can still opt-in to "family." Even if the city opts out, they have an independent choice where they can directly contract with the state and pay the state directly, and then they would still be able to receive those paid benefits. But it doesn't prohibit us from also working with them and managing their leave and for them to use our programs.
Mr. Marriott, did you have another question?
Yeah, I had a question just on that point, actually. So if an employee chooses to opt-in with the state, we have to do the withholding from their pay to pay their part of it. Do we have to pay our part of it too for each employee that opts in?
No, this would be just between the employee and the state, and they would remit their payments directly to the state.
They have to remit on their own. And then does that give them a way of doubling up where they take advantage of our leave program and get additional pay from the state as well?
That could be a possibility. As we learn more about the program, we could put things in place where they can use our leave and the family leave, but maybe not go over the total wages they would earn. So there's measures we could put in place to control those types of things. But yes, at this point, it would be possible for them, if they opt-in, that they could get both.
Okay.
And lastly, this wouldn't be a permanent decision. We can make a decision in a subsequent year and change our mind if we feel the family program is the right way to go. We can make that decision at a later point, and we actually have to vote every eight years to opt-out. Next slide, please. So those are basically our recommendations and our reasons why we're recommending opting-out. If you agree with us, we are asking for your permission to move forward. We would put a resolution on a future business meeting to formally vote on an opt-out of "family." This would require us to notify our employees in advance and give them an opportunity to come to the meeting and provide public comment, and then also a notification after the vote about the decision and then what that means for them and next steps. For us, the next steps would be to begin work on expanding our own programs to make sure we can fill those gaps and provide a benefit that's either equal or greater to "family," and do that by the beginning of January 2024. If we opt-in, we would start preparing for how to administer the program and coordinate all those different unknowns, and we would need to budget for the premiums. The city share is estimated to be, would be about $330,000 for the first year, and then, you know, continuing on from there based on gross payroll wages. And that is the end of my presentation, so.
Question for you, for me, on the, on input from our employees. Now, there's no reason why any employee should feel intimidated coming before city council, but is there some process that employees can, you know, that we can educate them through the normal channels and then get feedback from them prior to city council action so that they don't have to come before city council to voice their, you know, their preference?
Absolutely. We can do that through our internal communications channels. We will, when we provide the notice, we will provide them a very similar understanding of what "family" is and the things the city is going to do to provide a benefit that's equal or greater. And so we can solicit feedback through that process.
And then they're still going to be required to have a public hearing for the final decision of city council, and certainly anybody can come forward at that time as well.
Exactly. And they're not required to give comment, but they're invited to do so.
Sure. Mr. Fifer?
So do we offer like a short-term disability or illness benefit?
That is one of our gaps. We do not currently offer short-term disability, and that is one of the options we would look into, as well as perhaps expanding our own sick leave policy. We have an extended leave policy. We have multiple different ways that we could enhance or expand, which includes offering a short-term disability plan.
Okay. Well, I mean, that, if we had that, that, this would be a moot point, really. I was trying to look for it, and I couldn't find it, and that explains why. So that would be something we would consider putting in, and then we'll figure out the cost. And that would be something that the employees can opt-in as well and opt-out?
That would likely be, we'd have to consider the details of whether it would just be an automatic enrollment, or if we would make it an opt-in, opt-out kind of program. Those details would be figured out in the research.
Well, darn, I wish we kind of knew that now, because, I mean, we shouldn't need to know what the cost benefit would be, you know, for, for the city and the employees. You know, what is their cost benefit with that? Because most, I think, short-term disability is, you know, employee pays, I don't know, four or five bucks maybe a month or whatever it is, and then the city's going to pay something.
Right.
So, you know, I don't know what 0.45% is of their salary, their gross salary?
For an individual?
Individual.
Yeah, it's going to depend on their gross salary.
Yeah. But it only pays usually 60% of their base. So, I mean, it just would be nice to have had a stare and compare between that and this before we make a decision, but I don't think the time's on our side to do that.
Well, I can certainly look into giving you an estimate, if that helps.
I think it'd be nice to have at least a comparison, just to make sure that there's a benefit.
Yeah, prior to our public hearing.
For the citizens, I mean, well, obviously, citizens, the city, as well as the employees want to make sure we're not going down a path that's more expensive and less benefits and vice versa.
Right. We don't want to go down that path either. So if a short-term disability plan would create more costs, we'd look at alternatives. Frank, to be honest, I think expanding our own paid sick leave program is probably the best option. We already cover most of the reasons listed here, which sometimes short-term disability doesn't, it covers the employee but not the family member. And so I think there are other options that are better than short-term disability that would actually be more cost-effective.
Oh, and maybe that's what we compare with is options, multiple options. Especially, that's a great idea as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I find it kind of hard to make an objective decision when I'm only seeing the negative things about it. So that's kind of hard when I'm looking at this presentation. I agree, I'd like to see kind of that comparison. Additionally, you said that you were looking at policies that you could change to make equal or greater. Is it that we would make that a thing, or is it just per certain areas of those benefits?
We would work to create programs that are providing equal or similar or greater benefit to "family." So for example, our sick leave policy, it covers most of these areas, but if it doesn't cover, for example, the military exigency, we would create, we would add that into our program, and we would make sure that employees are covered for those 12 weeks. And we might even consider whether they should be covered fully for their wages or a partial amount similar to "family." That would all come out in the research.
Okay. And so if you're going to be sending us information, you're going to be sending kind of that side-by-side comparison of what this family would offer, the program, what we could potentially offer, kind of those costs associated?
Yes, that would be as part of the resolution. We would provide that information.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. So I think, I think opting out of this for us is probably the right answer. I wish us small businesses had had as successful of a lobby. But I know as this went through the legislature, you know, the projections are that it's underfunded by probably half, and that the actual cost of this will be double or more than what's being pitched at the moment. And just that amount of uncertainty for the city's budget is unacceptable. Whereas, you know, if we follow the rules and match that, at least we know with certainty what that cost is. So I don't have any problem opting out. In fact, I would recommend that we do, if for nothing else, just from the uncertainty of this new giant, unknown, untested, unworkable state program. And I think you guys are on the right track with doing that, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. So first off, really good job. Welcome. It's nice to see the fresh face up here. So you mentioned military exigency. Did you, is there any other on this list that we don't currently cover, or is that the one?
We cover deployment. We give paid leave for military deployment. This would include other things like death due to military deployment for family. If, for example, a spouse of an employee was, if they had to care for family because their spouse was deployed and detained, or if there was an unfortunate death, this would provide benefits for that. So that would be an area we would look to increase our coverage.
Okay. And are there any other things "family" covers that we don't already?
We cover pretty much everything, just not to the 12-weeks extent. We might cover, you know, our employees earn sick leave and accrue it every year, so we'll cover up to what they've got accrued. And then we have programs that also provide sick leave expansion for very critical issues where we can take from our sick leave bank. We have a sick leave advance. So we would look to expand those programs to cover the full 12 weeks.
Great. Yeah, that's, like others have said, that would be my primary concern, just making sure we do equal to or better than so that our employees aren't missing out. And in particular, the one thing that kind of glaringly jumps out to me is that "family" covers 37% to 90% of wages with a cap of $1,100 weekly. So I can see how those who maybe earn more would then get a much lower percentage of their salary, which could be quite awful for somebody who's maybe like a single-income household to face a dramatic cut suddenly. And so my follow-up question then to that is, will we have like a set benefit, like it's 80% of wages across the board, and there's not this variable here?
We will have, we don't have that figured out yet. But yes, the intent would be to provide a better benefit than 37% for sure. Short-term disability, as Councilmember Fifer said, usually covers 60%. So we would likely start there and work our way up to what makes, what's right for Arvada, what makes sense.
Thank you very much, Gabriella.
You're welcome.
Mr. Marvin?
Again, thank you for the presentation. So I heard that there's, there's research to be done on an alternative plan that's going to get us to match or better. And I heard that that was going to be presented by January 2024, but then as we lead, we need to make this decision here, and there's going to be some analysis going into the presentation that will be made for when we are voting on this, correct? So what, see my question, I was just trying to get clear on what are we going to see by the time we have to make a decision on this as far in regards to the alternative plan?
What we'll be able to present to you at this point is options that we're looking into. So for example, the short-term disability program, how we might expand our own sick leave program to cover the full 12 weeks, and options for perhaps, we have a sick leave bank where employees facing life-threatening illnesses can receive a donation. So if they don't have enough leave for their time that they need, they get a donation. We could expand that program to include not just life-threatening illness, but all of the things listed here for both them and a family member. So we're looking at those multiple options and trying to decide which one is the most, gives the best benefit to our employees at the most cost-effective rate for the city. So we would provide those options to you, but we won't be able to give you a lot of the cost analysis and those types of things for a while. That's going to take a little bit more time, and we'd like to include this as part of our total rewards overall philosophy and make sure that it's prioritized into that project as well. And that's why we would like to have the year to really make this, you know, give it appropriate time and thought. But likely, we would come to you by summer of 2023 with our, with our recommendations.
Okay. And what do we currently offer now for specifically family leave when, you know, expecting a new child? What is the, what is being offered now by the city for that?
The city offers paid sick leave for that. Employees earn 12 days a year, and they can accrue, they can accrue that over the time and roll it over to a maximum of 1,040 hours. So obviously, the longer you're here, the more you can accrue. And so you could, you know, that's six months, right? But we also have the Federal Family Medical Leave Act, which allows employees to take 12 weeks off. That is an unpaid leave, but employees can apply their paid programs. So that is what we have. So we do have gaps. I would say the majority of our employees have enough banked leave to be able to take that time, but we do have newer employees who don't have that much. And so we work with them on alternative ways to keep them in a paid status while they're gone, so their benefits continue. And this is where we would look to fill that gap.
Great. Excellent. Sorry, just one more comment, and that is, and maybe the timing of this will take more time to do this, but I would also like to see how we compare with other municipalities around us of, you know, similar size when you're doing the proposal for what we might be looking at.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Ms. Simpson?
So actually, to go back to the maternity for a moment, because I've actually been an employee who had to take sick time to have a baby. I hate that. I can't express to you how much I hate that. And I think strongly we should look to providing a proper maternity leave for our employees. First off, being pregnant is not an illness. Secondly, it can lead to illnesses that require use of actual sick time. And thirdly, what happens if your baby gets sick and you've used all your sick time? I myself was unable to take a single sick day for a year and a half until I paid back all my sick time to my employer. So I strongly urge us to look for a proper maternity leave for our employees and paternity, and thank you, thank you, Mr. Fifer, absolutely, and paternity leave for our employees. Having a baby is not an illness.
Thank you for those thoughts. We do have it on our list to support parental leave is what we're going to call it, to have a program like that, which would also coordinate with this. So that is something we're already researching.
Very good. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're going to have a presentation on code enforcement, an update for 2022, and I believe we're going to have Sergeant Ellen Stevens make that presentation.
Very good.
Good evening. So usually when I give a TED Talk, I have a headset. I'll try and stand by the podium just to make it easy for you. Next slide, please. So we've got a short agenda, and if I'm not mistaken, you guys can all see that on your tablets. And it's right, so I'm not going to redo everything and make it difficult for you. We're just going to go over a little basic history, introduce you to the team, kind of talk about how our code cases work, and talk about some of our numbers and some places where we think that we can make our processes a little bit better. Next slide, please. So in 2017, we looked at changing the way that we did code enforcement. Code enforcement used to be part of the city manager's office, and that was kind of a contradiction in terms. Enforcement and outreach are kind of two different things. So, next slide, please. We rearranged neighborhood services to encompass animal management and code enforcement because it's their job to enforce our codes and laws. That allowed neighborhood engagement to go and be under resiliency and be an outreach thing, because that's just an appropriate alignment of our resources. Next slide. So the change, the reason we decided to make the change, one is there was a reduction of force that was done, and what we were doing is removing two management positions from those teams and unifying them under the police department. One sergeant was handling those responsibilities. But most importantly, it allows code enforcement, animal management to work together. They can also collaborate with our other specialized units in the police department, COR, CRIT, investigations. They call us quite frequently. A lot of times when they go out to houses that they have problems at, they need us to condemn them. So being on the same team and having each other in our telephones really paramount to providing the best service that we possibly can. There's no reaching out to strangers. We're all on the same team. Next slide. So we're going to run you through just the team real quick, and you guys have it up there, and you can probably make copies, so I'm not going to read you everything. But we have one administrator who helps run code enforcement, animal management, retired Army. She was a vet tech in the Army. She's amazing, actually takes call loads off of my animal management officers because she can answer the questions that they can too. So really great to have her to keep the unit running. Notice how I put myself below. Chelsea, we know who's in charge. This isn't complicated. She buys me the supplies I need, and it's a big task. That's me with Oki. Oki was my first catch. Part of supervising this team is I go out there and I work with them. So I catch dogs, I catch bats, I go out and work code cases. So I know firsthand what they go through. Next slide, please. So these are our code officers as they're currently spread across the city. Depending on, and this probably means more to you guys because you are responsible for certain areas that elected you, but take a look at it, those are your go-to people. We're very fortunate. We have a retired officer up in the Lake Arbor area. That's Joe Hurdle out west. Alethea Lyons has been with the city in many capacities over the years, considers, you know, she's very loyal to Arvada. Lower right-hand corner, you've got Mike Travis. He works the very busy Baker area, which is your old-town area. He gets some of the more of his. He gets some of the more obscure complaints. And then there's our vacancy out in the southwest corner of the town, and we're working on filling that right now. We have a young man in the process. And he actually was a police explorer here. So once again, somebody that we've kind of shown what it's like to be here, and he's decided he wants to be a lifetime part of the family. Next slide, please. And then I put Don Bass on a slide by himself because Don likes enchiladas. He has got the whole enchilada. He works all roughly forty-one square miles of the city, doing abandoned and oversized vehicles. It's a huge task. Next slide. So our operational philosophy in code enforcement is simply this, we want to obtain compliance on problems that we have that have gotten to the point where they impact the quality of life of our citizens. We are complaint-driven. If it's big enough to cause an impact in your daily life, we want to hear about it. We don't want to come out to your, to your block and tell you how to live your life. If there's something that's causing a problem with you, you tell us and we will prioritize it. And that, the pictures there is kind of example, right? You've clearly got an encroachment on the left. The encroachment on the right is probably an issue, and we need to go out and take care of it. Next slide. So how do we get complaints in code enforcement? However you can imagine them. We take phone calls, we take letters, Ask Arvada Online is our digital system. We also get personal requests. If somebody comes to the front counter of any one of our substations, they can make a complaint with the police services technician, maybe they're not computer savvy, and we can enter that forum. Very simple process. One of the great things about Chelsea is, is she works seven days a week. Childcare issues and whatnot, she's in office three days a week, but she actually looks at my workflow seven days a week. So somebody, human hands are seeing these cases, reaching out and touching them seven days a week, which is something that I, I think is pretty special about Arvada. You will not see that level of customer service from code enforcement in most cities. Next slide. So we're going to go through two real simple case studies so that we can show you how the process works. I would like to say that code enforcement is a simple process, but I would be lying. In the end, enforcement and, and compliance is what we want, and unfortunately, the only way to get it is voluntary. Every single compliance is voluntary, unless I'm shoveling your snow for you or cutting your tall weeds. I'm not going to come cut your trees, I'm not going to paint your house. So we need to build those relationships and get people on our side. So the first one is just a simple case I called lawn enforcement, which is a big joke over there, because after twenty years of police work, I've now moved into lawn enforcement. So a citizen files a complaint. Now, I can't really see that far, so you guys may want to look on your screens to see the dates, but it kind of gives you an idea of how far it goes, when the complaint is received. Next slide, please. So up on top, you'll see those are what's going on in the case. The case is created, the first notice of violation, that's when my officer goes out and goes, mm, yeah, that's wrong. And they click a button, they go back to their office, it creates a notice of violation, we send to them in the mail. We usually will send it to the, the property itself, and then if there is some other registered owner, we can send it to them as well. So if you take a look at this one, the property, I think the initial inspection date was September thirtieth, they failed that inspection and we re-inspected it on the seventh of October, still not in compliance. This specific house actually is vacant. So super cool, own a house in Arvada, don't bother to live there, rent it, just kind of let it go. We gave extra time for them to come and compliance, and they never did. So we got to do the fun thing, what I like to do, we go and fix the problem ourselves. Next slide. So upon failing that second inspection, we assessed a one hundred dollar reinspection fee, and then we talked to our contractors, Keeson Landscape Management, and told them to go out and fix the problem for us. Next slide. So this is an example of a simple code violation that I can actually abate. Lawns out of sorts, I can go fix that, that's easy, I can fix stuff like that. Next slide. So here's a more complex case, I'm sure you're all familiar with that new construction there at Sixty-Eighth and Carr. And then there's that little white house that's kind of sitting right back in there. You shaking your head? Yeah, it's that house. So a citizen files a complaint by telephone, we get the message, we build the case. Next slide, please. So this is what we're dealing with. So we are the government, we can't just go onto someone's property whenever we want and do anything that we want, so we need to try and get compliance. Lots of problems with this, encroachment, construction materials, vehicles parked on unimproved surfaces. Next slide, please. So a lot of problems with this one, right? One of them is it's a rental home. So an officer hurdle goes up and knocks on the door, it's a dude that's renting the house. He doesn't really care as much as maybe like the property owner would. The tenant was non-English speaking, Officer Hurdle doesn't speak his native language. Multiple violations of many different categories. This was mid-COVID, so there was an eviction moratorium. So, you know, we're talking to the landlord, landlord's like, well, I want to throw him out and I want to clean this up, but I can't. And then it's not an easily abatable thing, right? As the government, I'm not going to go on his property and scoop up all those construction materials and take them from him. And it was an old home, it actually did not have a complete driveway. So some of those vehicles were just parked on what could be considered the driveway, but it's just compacted dirt. Next slide. So in this case, we just ran out of options, and, and to me, this is almost like admitting, like a failure, like we just wrote a ticket. We wrote a ticket, the case was completed on September second, he got the tenant out, cleaned it up by September twenty-third. So from start to finish, that's a hundred and eighty-seven days. And I think one of the slides has a note field, and you can see that Officer Hurdle had something like twenty-two contacts in that case. So it was very labor-intensive for him. Next slide, please. Compliance is the goal, that's what I want. It's, to me, writing a ticket is like admitting defeat, because once I write a ticket, my stats look great, and I wipe my hands of it, now it's the court's problem. Well, all compliance is, they, they will have to want to comply, whether they comply for me, a fine, a fee, a judge, a ticket, in the end, they're going to have to want to comply, just a matter of who they want to do it for. In the end, we can only abate so many problems ourselves. Then I think the next slide has my abatement budget, it's, it's not big, but some of them are expensive. Next slide. So here are some just ballpark costs for us to abate certain problems, graffiti, snow, weeds. Rubbish is expensive, so Keeson, when they scoop up all that rubbish and they take it away, they measure, I guess, cubic yards. Dump fees are not cheap. So my annual abatement budget is fifty-four thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars, which if I abate your property, I'll send you a bill for. And if you don't pay it finance, awesome, sneaking on to your next property taxes. So we're not just doing this out of the kindness of our hearts, but again, we have a very limited budget to work with, and if anybody is here remembers Iron Mountain Way, I was a detective on both of those cases, but dealing with that property was a handful. Next slide, please. So, wow, my eyes are old. Those are super small numbers, that's the fourth quarter of last year, just to kind of give you an idea of the workflow that's coming in. But in the fourth quarter, they resolved four hundred and seventy-five cases, two hundred and sixty-four of them, there was no violation noted. So either it wasn't a violation that was being complained about, if you were to make a complaint and say, Sergeant Stevens, there's a blue car parked across the street, isn't that against the law? Well, no, really, it's not. So it would be something like that, a non-violation, or somebody complains about the weeds and you cut them before we come out. So that's what those two hundred and sixty-four, our two hundred and seven cases had a violation noted, and they were voluntarily brought into compliance. So what that means is when I send that first letter out, overwhelmingly, if there's a violation, that first letter is all it takes. Nobody likes to get, you know, a letter from the principal's office, they fix their problems. And then I think we had four forced abatements, which forced abatements are where we send someone out to fix it. Next slide. This is, has to do with the percentage of, of forced and voluntary. Again, you'll see the forced abatements are down there at the bottom, extremely miniscule, and it depends on the time of the year and what we're dealing with. So we had those big rains two weeks ago? Yeah, I guess he's getting slammed with weed complaints right now. It's just mother nature dictates kind of our workflow. Next slide. Forced versus voluntary, but really what I like about this slide is what's on the bottom part, and this is probably the part that you guys probably get an earful about day in and day out, is how long it takes to fix problems, right? That's, that's really what people are upset about, they want their problems fixed and they want them fixed fast. Keeping in mind that every person has to voluntarily come into compliance, it's just a matter of, of how we can convince them to do it. And so right now, we look for alternatives, we work with people, and, and we try and get voluntary compliance every single time. Next slide. Current workload this year, spoiler alert, it has not slowed down. And again, we're looking to fill that one position. I mean, if you think about this statistically, that's twenty-five percent of our staffing, but our officers are handling it like a champ. We're just basically sharing Charlie Spector. Next slide. Inspections completed, this is something that I wanted to, to point out regarding the inspections completed, about how many of them are on time and how many are not on time. Again, there's plenty of work, and I think given the systems that the city has provided for us with ComKATE and Ask Arvada, I think there's, there's things we can do in the system to, to make everything flow smoother and happen more efficiently, and that's what our goal is in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Next slide.
Real quick, on that average resolution time, is that resolution as in compliance, or is that resolution of you going out and then doing the inspection?
Resolution means done.
Done, so they're in compliance now?
In compliance, either no violation or violation noted, and they get a first notice of violation, then we come out and re-inspect, and then it's compliant, or it could, they take two notice of violations to fix it, so.
So your average, it looked like it was nine days, ten days, and nineteen days, if I caught that right. Can you go to the previous slide? There you go. Oh, ten, nine, and nineteen, so that's how long. So when you got the complaint in March, it was nineteen days, they were in compliance.
Right, that is the, the average, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And again, what starts happening in March? Either we're getting dumped on a snow or things start growing. Next slide. This is something I threw in here, and thank you to City Manager's Office for loading my brand-new presentation tonight, because I wanted to pay a little homage to this. This is tickets. You can see that tickets drastically dropped off in COVID. I just wanted to be transparent with this. What's the right number of tickets? What's the right percentage of tickets? Personally, I don't, I don't even consider there to be a number. It's about compliance. If everybody's taking care of their property, then I'm a happy camper. I get, you know, I'm, I'm here every day, whether I get a hundred complaints a day or two. Next slide. Okay, so missed opportunities. One of the things that I found from coming over from the police department, and before that, in a very strong customer service background, is we take anonymous complaints. And I have some heartburn over it, because I think it is putting code enforcement in a position where we're not providing the very best service that we can. And so my problem with that is that we have no way to clarify reported information, whether it's a wrong address, inaccurate or incomplete description. We do get complaints that actually are not in the city. And the problem with that is I have no way to tell them that. So if you make a complaint that matches one of those criterias, every day you're looking out your window, wondering why Arvada is not doing its job. And I have no way of telling you, the house you're staring at is in Jefferson County, or what you're reporting to me is not a violation. And it's a huge missed opportunity, and we'll put some numbers too in a minute. Next slide. So I, without a way to engage, I can't ask questions, I can't give updates, I can't manage expectations. Somebody sends me a picture of anonymously of a giant cottonwood tree, I'm going to give them time to take that down, that could be upwards of six thousand dollars. You know, as the government, I'm not just going to come and wag a finger at them and, bankrupt them trying to take this tree down, I'm going to work with them. But I can't manage that expectation because I have nobody to talk to. Next slide. So it kind of gives us a false sense of success, right? Because we send out these customer surveys, but if you don't give me an email address, you don't get a survey. So all these anonymous complaints, where these people are looking out their window, wondering why Arvada is not taking care of them and, and listening to their complaints, they don't get a survey, so we don't get the bad feedback, and they have no way to express that. They usually go to Nextdoor. Yeah? Arvada Neighbors Connected is one of the groups I follow, I mean, no. Sometimes I do get tips from there, you know, and I want to address those concerns for them. Next slide, please. It's not a new or novel idea, this anonymous complaint thing, I know as a police department, we need to take anonymous crime tips? Cool, I'm down with that, I was a detective for almost a decade, please do. But as far as code enforcement goes, like if we can't engage with people, we can't tell them, hey, this is what we can and can't do, this is how long it should take, it, it just leaves them there wondering, like it's leading it to their imagination. And I don't know about you guys, but you know, when I think of something as one way and it's really not, it's hard to change my mind. I got to have that conversation. So Jefferson County doesn't take them, I consider that to be a medium-sized county. The one on the bottom is San Diego County, California. We just want, we don't do it. I'm not saying that that's what we need to do, maybe we ask for a phone number or an email address? Don't even tell me your name. Let me talk to you and tell you what I can do, or tell you maybe that's not a violation. Next slide. So I think we'll end on this slide, because I like the numbers on this one. So we had ComKATE pull from September first of twenty-one to February ninth of twenty-two, all of the anonymous complaints that were put in. Two hundred and sixty-one anonymous complaints. Fifty were closed outright. So if Chelsea or I close them, it's not a violation, they straight up forgot to put an address, the address is out of the city of Arvada, for whatever reason, it's completely unworkable. So that's fifty people that came to us for help and we can't dialogue with. So out of that, then we had a hundred and ninety-five unverified complaints. Now, those could have been righteous complaints, but when we went out, they had mowed the lawn or whatever it was, they abated it on their own. Check, I get that. But that's another hundred and ninety-five. So in the end, ninety-three percent of my anonymous complaints were unworkable. And where that makes me really nervous is that means ninety-three percent of the people who made anonymous complaints might be dissatisfied customers. I'm not going to pat myself on the back because I don't know that. They had no way to engage with me. So I'll stop there, because I think this is the last slide on this updated version. But the end result is, is by doing away with things like anonymous reporting or requiring some type of way to get in touch with someone, I will necessarily increase my workload, and I'm fine with that. If I will deliver a better product and I have to work harder for it, bring it on. The, the four of us, the five of us that are over there in code, will do it. So that is all I have.
Okay, Mr. Pfeiffer, you can lead us off.
Yeah, so thank you very much, I appreciate that. So I asked Mark about, you know, proactive and for code enforcement on commercial properties, because that's retail, visitors, tax revenue, everything else. Where, and I don't know if Mark or you, it's probably more Mark, because he's standing up there, where are we with, with that kind of perspective and letting council have that discussion?
We have discussed that with Sergeant Stevens and, and the PD team, and, and we think it's a worthwhile discussion to have. And Sergeant Stevens indicated that he would be engaged to work on that at council direction.
So would that be another workshop on that at another time, or would it come back as an ordinance update, or?
We could come back at another time to maybe run through exactly what we would do in the future.
Okay, no, I'm very interested in that, you know, we've had some commercial property go into disrepair, and I, it bothers me, especially in the entrances into our city, that we have weeds taller than people and they're surrounding a business. And, you know, they're not the owner, the occupants are renters, right? And they try to do something and either they're not responsive or what, but I just feel like our, our commercial establishments need to be welcoming to everybody.
Agree a hundred percent, and we're going a step further. I'm dealing with some people within the city trying to figure out how to proactively address our businesses, whether that is some sort of, any sort of mailings or anything the city sends out through all the different business groups and districts and whatnot, whether I can get little pieces of information put in there, or whether it's direct mailing, you know, seasonal things. A happy winter, just a reminder from code enforcement, you've got twenty-four hours from the end of snowfall to make sure that your pathways are acceptable. Love having you in Arvada. Or it's springtime, how about not putting up a hundred feather flags? It's one of those things where, and I don't know all of you individually, but I think some of you had mentioned previously that you own small businesses. It's a very difficult job with a lot of wide-reaching problems, and I have friends who own small businesses. I could go up to any of them right now and ask them what the rules are on signs in the land development code, and they'll just give me a blank stare, right? They're too busy worried about payroll, human resources, all these different things. Why don't we just take that burden off their plate and just reach out to them? You know, mechanicals, please, no wacky waving, flailing inflatable arm men, it's tacky. But we're looking at proactively engaging them.
And working with IEDA and figuring that out?
Yes. And whether there's already publications going out that'll let me sneak into, or whether I've got to direct mail them, we're going to start reaching out to them.
That's great, no, I'm looking forward to it, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer, if I could also remind council that in the strategic plan under Save Community, we do have a milestone related to focused proactive inspection for designated retail[1782.01] do have a milestone related to focused proactive inspection for designated retail commercial areas. So you'll see report outs when we report on the strategic plan as well.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Simpson.
Uh, thank you. So first I just wanted to commend code enforcement. I think you guys probably are the most hated people in the city oftentimes. It is a hard job. It's not a sexy job, but it's a necessary job. I can just speak from personal experience. I've had constituents call me just at their wits end, they don't know what to do. Um, something's really bothering them and it's affecting their quality of their life, whether it's smoke from a neighbor's fire pit and they're on oxygen or the landlord hasn't picked up the pet waste and they have a small child who likes to run through the park. So I just want to commend you guys because y'all take care of these small, unsexy things. Sometimes you have to be a little bit of the bad guy, but you, you take care of some important things for the community. So thank you to the entire team.
Thank you.
And then my next thing was just about the anonymous complaints. Part of me understands that people don't like being the tattletale. They don't, they just want to report it and be done with it and they don't want it to know it was them. But it's my understanding that when we go out there, we don't tell the person that maybe needs to mow their lawn, who told on them, correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. So this is a, this is more of like a criminal justice side, so I'm going to cop geek out on you real quick. So you, let's say you have a neighbor that's just completely atrocious, Mr. Devon, this is on you. Your weeds too tall, taller than my toddler. You make a complaint and you tell me who it is. I, as the code officer, I'm going to go out there and I'm going to stand in front of that house and I'm going to take a picture. I am the witness now. That's my photograph and evidence. You don't exist. So there are rare exceptions where we need a reporting party to act as a witness, but we'll have that conversation beforehand. The evidentiary rules for all the lawyers in here, that's, that's all the same. Evidentiary rules still apply. You know, the, then you as a neighbor can't go up and put your phone over the fence and take a picture of this stuff, just like I as a police officer cannot do that. So yeah, that's a conversation we can have with every person every time. Hey, we can recreate this evidence on our own, you don't have to be on my witness list. You don't have to sign my ticket, I got it.
Wonderful. Then I'm completely good with, um, letting it not be anonymous. People have to give their number, number or an email. They do that with us as council members. They reach us, out to us with their identities. So I don't see it, why it should be all that different with you. And then the last thing, I, just because it's almost 4th of July, um, we all get a lot of emails and calls about the fireworks. Do you want to just walk us through those real fast?
So. Yeah, we will have, I'm guessing, a 4th of July fireworks hotline that'll be set up and that's going to be a police issue. And we want the officers to go out and check on that. Cause a code enforcement officer, first of all, doesn't have the authority to deal with it. It's outside of the scope of their duties and I'm going to get it the next morning when I come to work. At that point in time, whatever they were shooting is already burned down, you know, half of, uh, two ponds. So, um, yeah, that's the other thing too is yeah, uh, you know, I want to make sure that people know the right places to go with this information because keep telling me that's not going to help me when I come in the next morning at 6:00 AM. So police department.
Police department, the non-emergency line.
Non-emergency line, 700-898-6900.
Thank you.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I, uh, first thank you for the job you do. My experience with code enforcement, which personally I've had several experiences with and they've all been handled very professionally, very appropriately. I think the, having the overall philosophy of what we're looking for is compliance here is absolutely the right thing. I, uh, you know, we have this big question of proactive or reactive code enforcement. Honestly, I think we have it right with particularly given the resources we have for code enforcement. So I wouldn't suggest that we should do proactive code enforcement, uh, ever. There's enough people who will be happy to report the things that are valuable to them. And I, and I think, you know, I'd bring up, some code enforcement issues are very simple. You know, if the weeds are too tall, you can, you can mow weeds, anybody can mow weeds. But you know, if you've got a 60 foot tall, big dead elm tree in your yard and you're elderly and you're on fixed income and that tree dies, it's not a small thing to abate something like that. And you know, the, the person whose yard that's in may very well have absolutely no ability to afford that. Um, and I know you guys work with them as best you can, at least on a timeframe, because that's also if you had a code enforcement complaint today about a 60 foot tall dead elm tree, I don't know how quickly you could actually employ somebody to do that. So I think it's important to always be compassionate with those things and, and particularly the ones that are complicated or expensive or difficult and, um, you know, we, I think, I think we're doing that as appropriately as we can. On the question of anon, taking anonymous complaints or non-anonymous complaints, I would not take anonymous complaints either. If for no other reason than just looking at the statistics, only 6% of them are actionable. So you're chasing 94 items around for every six that you're able to, to actually have a case that an open, that a case gets opened, that seems a terribly inefficient way to work. And, and so, uh, you know, on that question, I would also, you know, just, I, I was, I suspect that if, if we were to not take anonymous complaints, the number of complaints we would have in total would drop. But the quality of the complaints would go way up. And your workload ultimately might increase, but certainly it would be more, uh, productive work rather than the unproductive work of driving around, taking pictures of no violations to, 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 to just clear another anonymous complaint. So that'd be my point on that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Ms. Smith.
Yeah, we should remove the anonymous submissions as well. I agree. I'm wondering, is there a way that we can auto capture an email and number and not have it be their name? So if they're concerned with that name, they can just have, how you mentioned, a number or an email?
You know, that would be something I would work with ComKATE with. So ComKATE is the vendor that provides the software, which is the backend. I'm a little bit of a tech nerd, so you know, if there would be some sort of like anonymizer, which would allow me just to click through, so I would click on this ridiculously long string of characters and in the end it would get back to the customer, yeah, I would be, I would be down for that. Um, it's really not about knowing who they are, it's about being able to speak with them and manage your expectations and get clarifying information.
Right, and along the nerdy tech line here, I'm wondering, is there a way to have an external facing dashboard so people can actually go in and check the status if it's complete, what the outcome was, instead of having to call or follow up?
So if they provide an email address, they have direct access to their code enforcement officer. But I, it's the outward facing dashboard, that's an exciting idea. I like that. Cause you know, everybody here probably can track their, where their packages are from Amazon. If Amazon can do it, Arvada can do it.
I don't know if we have the resources like Amazon, but. So also I'm just, I'm curious about the time from submission to boots on the ground. So I saw that you had a 10 to 19 day range, but what is that from submission to getting and taking that photo you said?
So when we get a submission and we create the case, um, you know, usually we ask that the officers get out there within seven days. Um, officers only work their sectors and they don't have backup. So we had an officer fall out of the back of his truck earlier this year, um, unhitching his camper, uh, which he had no backup then. So you know, we kind of ran around like little crazy ants trying to, to pick up his work after him. But usually, uh, since they work four 10s, you can usually count on that being looked at within four to five days. But we set a date when we get it for seven. So if I get one today and it's in your sector, I'm going to sign it to you within a completion date of seven days. And seven days you need to go out and see that for the first time. And also something that Chelsea I've been doing, if we've been reaching back out to people when human hands touch your case and send you a message. Thanks for reaching out, Lisa, your concern has been sent to Code Officer Bass, who works Tuesday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Within seven days, he will go out and complete an inspection. Oh, by the way, this is Officer Bass's phone number. And we think that goes a long way to let people know that human hands have looked at this case and it's not just off in some black internet hole.
Gotcha. Two more questions left. One, do you ever ask them, or could we put in the submission, did you ask the neighbor first?
Well, yeah, so it would be nice if, if neighbors would communicate more. Uh, for as long as I've been a cop, there is no security system that is as good as a neighbor who cares about you. I've seen ring doorbells defeated, Vivint, Brink's, you name it. But if your neighbor goes, hey geez, there's, you know, that's not John or his wife's car in the driveway loading up their TVs, maybe I should call the police. That neighbor is probably a better thing. I, I usually, if there's an issue that's maybe not a code violation, like one of the ones we tend to get is leaves or needles falling from someone else's tree on someone else's property. Obviously that's not against the law because I get 12 bags of leaves every year and I don't own a single blessed tree. Not against the law, but we try and, you know, we will try and mediate that for people. Um, you know, a lot of times, uh, you know, you can trim your trees straight up your property line. Not always a good idea because if you don't know what you're doing, you could kill a tree. Um, so we do try to mediate people and, um, you know, if any of you have sent in a case, you've probably seen my name on it. Um, I try to look after, you know, some of the more complex cases. Uh, but to answer your question, if people would just talk more, I would be out of a job, maybe?
Last question, just on his, on his point of, we have Brothers Redevelopment and we have a good partnership there and I understand the resources are limited with one organization. I'm wondering, do you have kind of a resource list when you meet people that are disabled, low income elderly that need, you know, help with some of their home repairs or some of that code enforcement?
Yeah, so.
Give that to them?
We do and the officers develop those themselves. Um, but a good example is, you know, Mike Travis had a house, he wanted me to write a ticket on for a year and we can never get ahold of the guy. Uh, come to find out, he was very, very ill and actually had both legs amputated. So by the time Mike was done making face to face contact with him, he had registered the whole family at the, or was it the family table, the food bank? And brought a whole, he filled my AM, or my, uh, code truck up with food and took it back to the family. Within two weeks, he had a church out there, uh, with a roll off, um, cleaning up the mess. So that's, and that's kind of what I love about them. How easy would that have been to just write a ticket, flick that and walk away? Alan and Mikey Travis and man of what he does. So, uh, we do have a list of resources. It's kind of self-made, so if you have a group that would like to be involved, send them to me and we will definitely use them. Cause you know, neighborhoods have life cycles and those life cycles, you'll probably see that, you know, might be a slightly older group of people that can't care for their yards the way I care for mine. We will definitely take those.
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, echoing what has been said already, thank you for all the work that you're doing and, and it is, um, has been said, uh, not an easy task at all. So we appreciate that. I'm just going to, I think, echo a lot of what has been said though, as far as some of the questions you've asked, um, and what has been brought up and, and expressed my support for, um, our continued looking into the proactively dealing with commercial violations. So I think that, that's an important step for us to take next. And eliminating the anonymous complaints. I'm, I'm in support of that as well. And I guess the last thing I wanted to comment on and, and ask the question of if we've done more, uh, public facing reporting, like in the Arvada report or whatever on, on our code enforcement, the data that you presented tonight, you know, the amount of time it takes to respond to complaints, what's that process of how complaints are dealt with? Have we communicated that to the public, you know, as much as we can? I think that's really important because, you know, we, as, as representatives of our public, we hear, you know, complaints about not getting things taken, you know, into consideration or responded to in a, in a quick manner. And so I think it's always important to report back, this is actually what's happening. Here's the data. I'm, I'm a data driven person, so, so I'd love to see more of that, um, through our communications efforts.
Yeah, we worked with AscarVADA last year on the animal management side. Uh, they were kind enough, I think, to give me a half page, which was kind of cool. Um, I'd be happy to reach out to them with code enforcement information and that goes back to the anonymous reporting, right? If we can educate people on what we can and can't do and what the reasonable timeframe is and, and what the end result is, is simply compliance. You know, we don't want to come in and tell people how to live their lives, but if the way you're living your life is outside of code, to the point where it's affecting your neighbor, then we'll make it our business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marriott.
Hey, thanks. I had one other thing, uh, one other thought, um, and I, I would probably want you not to answer this now, but it seems to me that since you guys are out in the field every day doing this and you're seeing some things repetitively, um, that they can either be just common issues that, that citizens have and, and that's one side of the coin. But the other side of the coin would be, are there any places within our city code where we have things that don't work? Where the, where potentially rather than the person being wrong, the law is wrong? And is there a method by which those things can be examined on a regular basis as well? I think in my time here on council, I don't think we've ever heard anything like that. And so either we're perfect or, um, we, yeah, get the wink, uh, or, or something. But is there a way for us to have that communication, that kind of 360 communication where your team can say, you know, we deal with this on a relatively regular basis and it just doesn't make sense?
Yeah, yeah, and, and I'm not going to go into detail in answering because you asked me not to, but it just like a simple example is, is like our tow, our tow policies and stuff. There's, there's little holes in there, um, you know, an abandoned vehicle, I can tow after seven days. A ban, a motor vehicle or a motor home, right? Supposed to be 72 hours. Well, that's fine and dandy, but my tow policy does not allow me to act on that 72 hours. So those are little things that we can tweak to clean things up and, and my officers are always more than willing to bring them to me. Frequently.
Good. Uh, I, I also agree with the concept of let's do away with the anonymous complaints. I think that's, um, and I, I think we do need to educate the public as to why and what the protections are for, for people who are making complaints that, as you've, as you've so well indicated tonight. So thank you for your great work and, um, you know, I, I'll differ with, with Mr. Marriott. I do think that on commercial properties, we've got to do some, some proactive. Because I think a lot of people just don't complain about those and yet they are an eyesore for our community. And I'll tell you who, one of the best reporters, and I don't know how much you deal with her, but Marine Fair from Urban Renewal constantly complains about any property within the Urban Renewal District that's, and I think she typically goes directly to, you know, the owners and things of that nature. But, um, you know, she's, she's our police person on, and, and all the dead trees over by Walmart and stuff, she's on them all the time, so.